Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, July 20th, 2020, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Councilor Herrera.
Here.
Councilor Parsons.
Here.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Council President Freeman.
Here.
Councilor Reed.
Here.
And Councilor Kohler.
Here.
Thank you all very much. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for joining us in the cool air conditioning on an actual summer day. We do have those here in Oregon once in a while, and very happy about that. I think we begin to be more happy about the fact that I think the splash fountain is going to open at some point, but we'll hear about that later. With that, I don't have anything under special orders or business committee reports. I do have Jeff Sargent here to talk to us about the parks. So if you want, come on up and just make sure you speak very distinctly in the microphone so people at home can hear you.
Yes, thank you, Council, for your time. Appreciate being here to share with you what we've been doing at the Kaiser Parks Advisory Board. We met last Tuesday, July 14th. We had several citizens who came to share some interests. One Betty Hart of Kaiser shared some concerns about some pathways at Country Glen Park that had some offset that was a tripping hazard, and he discussed that. And in fact, she had fallen on it, of course, she wasn't seriously manager. But Parks Manager Robert Johnson explained that there are plans to go in and fill sunken land around those paths at that park and others, so that's going to be addressed. Paul Ross Matt, who was legal staff, came and reported out on a project that he had done at the community garden to restore some benches that were in progress repair, and they look fantastic. They look brand new, and he did it in record time, so we're grateful for that. And then Jane Herb of Kaiser came to us to talk to us about her work on pushing for a library. You probably are aware of this effort, and she's proposing that it be cited at Kaiser Rapids Park. So she asked us to consider what that might look like, perhaps as a shared recreational space as well. Parks Manager Robert Johnson gave his report about some extensive clearing that had been happening that's been completed at Wallace House Park to clear out some overgrowth, which had been also sheltering some homeless population down here, and so apparently it's much cleaner. It had also been a hazard for emergency vehicles to come in and address things like the fire that happened there last year where that was a problem. So that looks a lot better.
Would you mind moving just a little closer to the mic? They're having a hard time hearing you on the TV channel broadcasting out.
It's really, it's just as quiet.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
I'm trying to project.
I'll let you know. I'll see one of these or, yeah.
So the clearing of Wallace Marine Park and then also the Clyde Creek play structure that's planned to be built, it's been delayed, it's going to start again this fall. And there's also several new summer employees that he has hired and one other starting this week that are coming on late, but he's very glad to have. Parks staff, if you're not aware, are Kaiser Parks Advisory Board council members are responsible for certain parks to make sure they're well maintained, and half of us report at each meeting. And so half of us did report this meeting, and there were no issues other than Clint Holland reports that Kaiser Little League Park continues to be booked for tournaments and used, and so that's good revenue for the city. And finally, Matt Lawyer reported out that Kaiser Parks Foundation was grateful to be honored by this council as volunteers of the quarter, and he was thankful for that. They really enjoyed that. And then the watershed council is on hiatus for the summer, of course. As you can imagine, because of the inability to do projects, they did do the cleanup of the grounds here back in Warren. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? So one point of clarification is Wallace House Park, Wallace Marine's on the other side. And I would echo what you said and what I've heard from people who have been down there. I walked my dog down to take a look, and wow, that looks amazing. And to be able to open up that space for more park use that had up till now just not been accessible is going to be really exciting to add that to our usable inventory.
Thank you for that clarification.
You bet. Any other questions? Thank you so much. We appreciate it. I don't have any other committee reports, so we will cover the rest of them during our council liaison reports, unless I miss somebody. Is there somebody else here to give a committee report? Okay. Want to make sure I didn't miss anybody. That takes us to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have no public hearings scheduled this evening, and I have three people signed up for public testimony. And Carol Dorfler, I'll call you first. And Daryl Brown is on deck.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
I am here to...
Thank you, Madam. There you go.
I am here to follow up on the previous council meeting of July 6th that I was not able to attend, and I just want to say I watched it, and thank heavens we can watch these council meetings and all the other meetings also. So I totally agree with Pat Fisher, who was here testifying about the charter revision. And yes, there does need to be replacement language for Section 44 or a resolution of inclusivity. However, I don't think we, as a city, should wait until voters agree to remove Section 44. I believe we need a resolution of inclusivity now. And I'm asking you all, mayor, councilors, to join with the many cities in Oregon, Coos Bay, Toowallaton, Hillsborough, Monmouth, Salem, and there are others who have adopted an inclusivity resolution, and bring it forth to be voted on in the most reasonable amount of time as it takes to draw up such a document. That being said, in doing this, perhaps our neighbors will not be fearful anymore. And the second, any questions?
Councilor Herrera.
Yeah, you know, I'm on board on the inclusivity thing, but was there discussion as opposed to putting it, the difference between having a resolution later or having it in our charter? And I would need a clarification for that if I may from our city attorney.
Thank you, Councilor Herrera. That was discussed quite a bit, actually, at the Charter Review Committee, and Councilor Reed and Councilor Freeman can weigh in on that. And as usual, for an attorney, I'll try to be...
Councilor Smith.
Did I say, what did I say?
Reed.
Okay, you got promoted briefly, sorry. I apologize, Councilor Smith. I don't know how I made that slip. So as usual, I'll make the short question longer because I'm an attorney. But I do want to explain that to you. For purposes of the other options, such as ranked voting at large versus not at large, that sort of thing, that's purely a policy question, and I had no opinion on that at all. With regard to inclusivity issues, I recommended to the committee that they can recommend as a committee. They did not formally do so, but they did discuss this issue at length, and I think the two councilors who were co-chairs can tell you that I think there was some sentiment towards pursuing this, but I advised strongly that it not be in the charter. It basically could serve, unfortunately, in today's society as a target for litigation. And once in the charter, it's hard to take it out again. If council wants to pursue this line of policy, it would be more appropriate as a resolution, and that's what I advise the committee.
Councilor Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, question. I had agreed, you know, we kind of had consensus, if I remember correctly, about the resolution option. What are the disadvantages of having it as a resolution? Is it as strong, or does, if it's in the charter, does it have to be voted on?
Right, it will be voted on as part of the charter revision. And it, and there are some cities that have that. My colleagues and I feel, that I've talked to, feel pretty strongly that any kind of policy thing you make with regard to this issue can serve as a litigation target. But the flip side of it is, it's a policy that I think a lot of places are looking to follow. It makes sense to follow. It's just, it's a bigger problem if it's in the charter. And it just becomes something that if somebody manages to tag onto in court, then you can't change it later very easily at all.
May I follow up on that, Madam?
Follow up.
Okay, give me an example of what kind of litigation something of this sort in a charter would be.
So if somebody says the city didn't follow up on something with regard to sexual orientation, there are already state laws for that. They can follow that and the state laws. However, if you're going to add another thing in the charter that somebody can argue about whether or not it's something you did or not did, then, you know, my concern would be that you have a situation that you're just going to end up in a lawsuit. And you can end up in a lawsuit in a resolution situation too, depending on how the resolution is worded. But if you do, and it turns out that a court took a different view of what they thought you intended by that resolution, then you can change it going forward. But if instead that lawsuit's based on the charter, then that would be difficult to do.
One more follow up.
Last one, I promise, Madam Mayor. Is a resolution as effective as being in the charter in terms of a statement making, our city making a statement?
Oh, I certainly believe so.
Well, I counted it up, and the cities I saw, they had resolutions. That's why I favored that resolution.
Right. That's much, much more common. Right.
All right. Thank you. You answered all my questions. I appreciate that, your patience.
Thank you. And I would remind council and the folks watching that the city council did pass a resolution when we were debating the issue regarding supporting the defeat of Measure 105. We led off with our policy statement in that regard. "All people shall be treated with dignity and respect," as a foundational value that we could then apply as many ways that we can in continuing to develop our understanding of equity and putting that into practice. The follow-up to that has continued to be looking for and asking for input on actionable items that we could move forward with, and we can already point to a number of things that we have continued to work on, and we will continue to ask for people's input. What can we do now? What can we continue to do better? So we can put the words into action. And that, I think, is going to really honor the ideas and the experiences that people have had in our community, to be able to see words put into action and changes in their lives in our community. So I would also remind people of that. A comment or a question from Councilor Parsons?
Yes, Shannon, would it be possible to get a copy of some of these other cities' resolution?
Certainly.
I would like, I would like to see how it's written in other cities.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At a couple of the different Charter Review Committee meetings that I attended, there was extensive testimony from public about, Eric specifically said he would rather not put something like that in and have it be a lightning rod for people to say, "We don't want to follow this charter. We don't want to vote for this charter because it has this in it." He felt it was a lot more important to remove Section 44 and have that be part of our reasoning for the charter rather than to muddy for some people by putting an inclusivity clause in the charter itself. So there was quite a bit of discussion and talk about that, and I tend to agree with him.
So, and it sounds like the decision has been made to keep the conversation separate. The charter, we're going to be discussing that tonight and moving that forward to the ballot, and then we can continue the work that we are doing under our current council goals to put action behind the resolution that we have already passed. Councilor Herrera.
Thank you, Madam. And just as a follow-up, this removal of Charter 44, to me, it's the only logical, to me, it makes sense to, although it'll be separate and make a revolution, resolution down the line. That's like the follow-up saying, you know, like I said on my, in last meeting that I felt like we owe that community apology. This would kind of cover the whole idea that, you know, hey, we welcome everybody. So to me, it's the next, the next logical step, if you will. And that's my own opinion, and I want to pursue that, just so you know. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. You had another item that you wanted to bring up. Go ahead, Carol.
I have part two.
Part two.
From the last meeting.
Carol, part two.
And I'm glad to see that my statement generated this discussion because I'm feeling very, very strongly about it. For those of you who were at the unity barbecue, you know that I received a card from a neighbor who said she did not feel safe. She only felt safe because I had a sign in my yard that made her feel safe. And that just brought this whole thing, that's why I'm here. Because if there's one neighbor that isn't feeling safe, there are more neighbors that aren't feeling safe. And we need to, as a city, stand up and embrace these people and tell them, "You are safe in our city." And I feel like if you pass this inclusivity resolution, if you would bring an inclusivity resolution to this chamber and vote on it and let the peoples know that they are safe, then I think it would probably be one of the better things that Kaiser has ever done. So, part two.
Part two.
Part two.
That was, that was two, that was one A, one B.
One A.
Yeah, one B.
This is number two.
Number two.
And it has to do with the discussion of fireworks that you, Mayor Clark, brought up at the end of the last meeting. And as you know, and if you're following Nextdoor...
Just a little bit.
Which is a social media site, there have been multiple, multiple comments. I lost track at 42, okay? There were a few that defended. A majority of them complained. And a lot of them complained because the fireworks went on prior, a week or so prior to the actual holiday, and of last night are continuing. Okay? So to Chief Teague, I want to say that a number of those complaints, or those comments, were that I didn't call the KPD because I know they won't respond. And, and I'm sorry about that, but that's, that's the way it is. So that's probably why the call center only had 310 calls because the 30 people that said they wouldn't call would have brought that up to 340. So there would have been more calls. And there are people that just don't comment on, on that social media site. So I just hope, the other part of that question is, Mayor Clark, you were going to follow up on this, and I'm wondering what I can take back to that social media.
So rather than take it to social media, actually, we're going to bring it to a fuller discussion. Over the weekend, I wrote down some ideas that I had gleaned from people's experiences and my own, different approaches, different responses that we, as a community, could take given the situation in this city where we are in a state that passed a law to make something illegal and did nothing about it. Anybody remember another situation like that? Yeah, think back, not too far. So we have to decide as a community how we want to approach that. So Chief Teague has given some thought and also can respond to the issue regarding people calling. And I think the bottom line on that one is, please do. Chief, do you want to talk about that a little bit or right now so Carol can hear that?
Am I on the timer?
You are not, sir.
Yeah, I'll still try to keep it short. It's, Carol, between July 1st and midnight July 5th, we received only 38 fireworks complaints. So that serves to prove your point. What I told the mayor, and by the way, the mayor took your direction, and she was all over this over the weekend and Friday. And I was thinking about it too when I was mowing my pastures. What we've decided to do over there is, let me back up. Let me tell you what the problem is. The problem is fireworks complaints are a B misdemeanor. If you steal something from Buy Mart that's less than 1,000 bucks, or less than 100 bucks, that's only a C misdemeanor. It's a C misdemeanor for stealing something, and it's a B misdemeanor for fireworks complaints. Interestingly too, as I scoured the ORSes yesterday, there's only one ORS that says law enforcement officers shall enforce, and that's fireworks complaints. I think the legislature recognizes that cops aren't going to arrest people for a non-person crime for a B misdemeanor. They're trying to compel us to work this, and we do. We respond to people, and we tell them, "You can't be doing this, and if they do it again, we'll come back and we'll arrest them." In fact, we made a, we gave someone that warning last night down on, in southeast Kaiser. Same thing, blowing off fireworks, mortars last night, came by and told them, "Can't be doing this. Come back again, it's a B misdemeanor. You're going to be arrested." If the legislature had had made it a violation, we would have been taking action all this time. We're really hesitant to arrest people, especially when most of these people aren't criminals. They're not stealing things from Buy Mart. They're blowing off fireworks and otherwise generally law-abiding, good patriotic people. Never mind the patriotic state, they're good law-abiding people. So what I've suggested to my guys and to the mayor, what we will do is, if we can get maybe from you or someone else, if they can identify who the problem people are, we will, we will reach out to them now, and we'll also reach out to them in writing prior to next July, and give them the warning then. We will also need somebody at the time these things are going off to tell us who it is because generally when we get there, there's eight or 10 or 30 people in a cul-de-sac, and it's impossible to figure out who the perpetrator is. So if we can get that kind of cooperation, so one, let us know who's doing it now, and two, if you call in when it's happening and can serve as witnesses, and we will have already issued a warning, if we can know ahead of time, we will make the arrest then. But our experience has been in contacting people ahead of time and warning them that it's a B misdemeanor is that we don't see those problems come up. We have gone out, like in June in years past, with repeat violators or people that neighbors have called us about and told them, warned them in advance. We've, we've not yet had somebody popping off mortars when they've been warned. So I think we can do that. I regret that it's going to take some effort on the part of the neighbors.
Well, personally, at 10 o'clock at night, when I'm just sitting down with my little beer to watch my TV show and a mortar goes off, I'm not about to run down the street to find out where the hell it's going off at because by that time, they're gone, and I'm running around in my nightgown, in my bathrobe and slippers, with my damn hair, which is getting cold, huh, warm. So, so I don't want to, I don't want to be unreasonable, and I don't want it to be unreasonable for the people that I'm trying to help on this social media site, plus my neighbors who are all complaining. I didn't bring their names, but I do know that they're having fits. So, so the fact that you are saying, "Call it in," that, that is a positive sign. Because I can quote you now. I can say, "I was there, and he said to call." I'm not done.
Call it in.
Call it in.
And help us.
And try to figure out where it's coming from.
Now, I read those posts, and there's at least one complaint in there that knows the house, if not the person that's doing this. That one we can solve. We can fix that one. The one where you're complaining about four streets over, you know, those are a crapshoot. And by the way, a lot of those, like in southeast Kaiser, I can show you the map, calls in southeast Kaiser, they're all, they're all generally around a particular area. I'm sure it's maybe one or two violators, as opposed to 13.
Thank you. Thank you for thoughts that you put into it.
So will you follow up then with whom you can identify?
Oh, I'll put it up on the, on the site. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to quote you, though.
Hey, I'm at it.
Okay. I just want to put it out there.
Carol, you've never scared me.
The other, you know, and I think it's very important for folks to know is that you do need to call it in. Putting it on Facebook, putting it on Nextdoor doesn't make it a call in to the police. There are people who will grouse on Nextdoor all day long, all night long. They're pretty fascinating, some of those posts. We've all, who are on Nextdoor have seen them, but that doesn't count. That doesn't count as a call in for service. I mean, yes, Chief, you've read them. You know what they're talking about, but you can't call that as a call for service, can you?
Well, sure, if somebody calls in, it's a call for service.
If they call it in, but if they grouse on Nextdoor.
Oh, no, 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 right.
No.
Yes, you don't.
That's, that's the problem, is people will grouse on Nextdoor, and, well, you saw it, so you should have done something about it. I saw it three days later.
The operative words are that we've got to have help. We have to identify who it is. And we pull up in a cul-de-sac, and there's a dozen people around. Nobody's pointing fingers at anybody else.
I got you. So Mayor Clark?
Yes.
You were also going to follow up with the state about the mortars?
So my, my issue with the state is we have a state that made mortars and other flying lit objects illegal. And I think most of you know my husband was in the fire service for 42 years. So he's had his fair share of responding to calls for things flying and going boom and body parts coming off, et cetera, et cetera, as a result. And he said he would drive up, and everybody's like, you know, "I'm on incident good," and then they drive away, boom, off it goes again. Our state passed a law that they have done absolutely nothing about the supply. We have people driving over to go get these mortars, and what do you think they're going to do with them? It doesn't take a, okay, rocket scientist, a bad, bad son. Sorry, I went there. My bad. To figure out what's going to happen, you go by, things will go boom. You are going to set off things that go boom. And this year, people were staying home, following the governor's orders, so they set them off at home. That was extra special. My dog is still on CBDs, trying to calm down for that. So I think that we need to be talking to the legislature. Straighten this out. Help us out here. Either make it legal and tax the heck out of it so we have resources to deal with the people who are setting off in a time, place, and manner that is disturbing the quiet enjoyment of our homes, or actually help us to stem the flow of the flying explosive things into the community. But this is something that is statewide. And I don't think that we have the person power to get in there and go, "Well, we're going to pass separate rules from everybody else." We can try if the community as a whole agrees that this is the direction we want to go. But I think the legislature needs to step up and own the mess that they created back in, what was it, the 80s they passed this? That's when a lot of other brilliant things got passed. And deal with it. Decide once and for all. Are we doing it or are we not? And help us out here because otherwise, we're going to continue to have this conversation every year as things go boom in the sky, and we go, "There they go again." It's frustrating.
So who do you see as taking that to the legislature? I'll start. Thank you.
I know people. And you know what?
Yes.
We all know those same people. So contact the legislators with some constructive, helpful ideas. They don't have a lot of time to sort through. This would be helpful. Help us get this done and see if they're willing to engage in that conversation. Chief?
I'm just going to suggest this falls on my mind. If they would reduce that to a C misdemeanor and add participating in the unlawful use of fireworks.
What he said.
I mean, we could cite a whole cul-de-sac full of people into municipal court. I guarantee you, pretty darn soon it'd clamp down.
Would you please send that to me in email so I can use that in suggested language? And there you go, folks. That's how Kaiser Problem Solves.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
All right, from fireworks to ITMS and where, Daryl Brown.
Is it loud enough?
Yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I wanted to address this stuff.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you could say your name and your city of residence for the record. I'm sorry.
I'm Daryl Brown. What else did you need?
City of residence.
Kaiser.
Thank you. Your time is yours.
I wanted to address these items, but I mostly have questions, and I'm not sure if this... and I'm not sure if this is the right place for a back and forth. So ransomware's been around for many years, and the past couple of years, it's been very widely publicized that municipalities were being targeted. So my first question is, how is it you guys were not prepared for this?
Good, keep going. Tim, Tim.
Who, who is responsible? Who's guiding you? Who's advising you? Do you have a staff member? Do you have an outside firm? And where was the failure here? Did you, did this entity not advise you? Or did they advise you, and you didn't heed the advice? And then my other questions were about what additional costs were incurred in rebuilding servers and an outside consultant. And my, this is my job, so this is what I do. I run a micro business, it's just me, one other person, one employee, and we support small businesses in Oregon and elsewhere. And it's a very simple matter to, not to prevent it. You can't prevent it if you're being targeted. If anybody tells you they're going to prevent it, they're lying. You can't prevent it. But it's a very simple matter to recover from it without negotiating with cyber terrorists. So that's mostly my concern about this incident, and where the advice is coming from. That also leads into how you're being advised with the second thing on my list, which is the unanticipated merchant fees when you guys implemented the online pay system. So I'm wondering how you were advised to implement this online pay system, but nobody suspected that anybody was going to use it, and there would be fees involved.
Good. So if I could, I'm going to start with your first questions, your first set. If I could press pause briefly? So in our packet tonight, and you probably saw it, that's why you're here, is the information regarding the contracts we have with the consultants and the services that we used in the recovery from this particular incident. So that is out there for public view, and it's in the packet that we're going to be dealing with tonight.
Oh, okay.
So I would invite you to read that. It answers a number of your questions in terms of the who, the how, the what, the where, to the extent that we are able to say so. And you understand there are some limitations in that regard.
Right.
So I don't know if Mr. Johnson or Mr. Wood have anything to add to that, just briefly?
Where would I get hold of that?
It's, it's online, and there's a print packet back there. So you're welcome to print, pick up a print copy of our entire packet. And the entire packet is always posted on our website at kaiser.org under Council Agendas.
Oh, okay.
So we always try to make that available. As soon as we get it, it's published for everybody to be able to see it.
All right, great.
Okay. Tim, did you want to add anything?
Sure, I can, I can add a little bit of color to it. It is my, my department, I oversee the IT group. So we do reach out, and we are connected with a lot of the different cybersecurity networks. We did get kind of caught a little bit short, obviously. So there was a few holes that we weren't quite prepared for. I guess to really answer both of your questions at the same time, we never really planned on a pandemic and the implications of a pandemic. So that impacted both of our online bill pay fees as well as exposure to cybersecurity incidents. So had we not had a pandemic, I think we would probably be not having this conversation at this moment. Unfortunately, the investigation is still ongoing right now, so I can't give you a lot of the technical details. But yes, it is quite a process to recover from something like this. You are correct that basically we have to go back and basically rebuild our entire network. At this point, I was going to give you an update a little bit later, but maybe I'll just go ahead and go now. We still are in the process of restoring some of the services that got impacted. We're almost completely up and running with everything. We do have a few ancillary processes that we really have to reach out to third-party service providers. We don't have the capabilities in-house to restore some of the stuff. Say, for example, our Springbrook software that did cause about an eight-hour delay as we did need Springbrook to come in and reconnect everything, get the pieces back together. We have quite a few services like that, that we do have to have the outside. We just don't have the ability or the know-how of how their, their systems work. We are implementing quite a few new processes, new applications. You'll see tonight, we're adding a new endpoint virus software that also has active intelligence attached to it. So it should be able to see and basically stop in its tracks anything similar to this in the future. So that's just one of the things that we're adding. We're also adding, you probably won't see the agreement for this because it's below the threshold that normally comes to city council, but we are rolling out two-factor authentication to all of our endpoints, as well as to all of our networked assets. So that'll, that'll be, we're probably about 50% deployed there. We also have implemented some new, new software that really prevents outbound DNS pings. So if there's a DNS, which is basically an IP address that out there that is known to be a bad actor, anything that goes to try to ping that is automatically blocked. So we've added a few things like that. Still a lot of things in the works that we're working on, though. So we'll, we'll also be bringing to city council at the next meeting a contract to change internet providers. We've been really somewhat bandwidth limited by some of the options that we have. So with this new agreement, we'll be able to expand things of, you know, cloud backups, that kind of a thing. With the volume of data that we have, it just has been very cost prohibitive and also time prohibitive as far as being able to get things into a cloud backup kind of area. So those are just a few of the things that we've been, been working on. But still, the investigation's still ongoing, and we'll have more of a debrief at a later time, so.
All right.
Did that answer both your questions?
It does, and you're going to discuss this more later, or?
It sounds like there will be additional steps. The two items I mentioned are on our consent calendar, so unless they are pulled for discussion, they are available for your reading pleasure. And you are, of course, welcome to ask your questions and as we continue to evolve in unraveling this. Mr. Wood?
I would also add, if you want to reach out to me on an individual basis during the day, we can definitely have some further conversations. Sounds like if you're in, in the field, I would definitely take any advice that you would have, so.
All right, and I'd happy to offer up my services for free. If you guys are discussing any, adding any tech or doing anything, you don't have to heed my advice, but if you want another opinion, I'd be glad to offer it. So my only other question would be moving forward. I know, I have no doubt you're going to shore it up now, but moving forward, these things evolve. The ransomware is going to evolve, and so there's a plan to keep up with that?
There is. I actually get about four emails a day of new updates that we have to do, and we rolled out an emergency update to one of our servers over the weekend. So we're getting pretty much inundated with a lot of information right now, for sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Richard Rodriguez. It just says public testimony, so I don't know what your topic is. And again, just your name and your city of residence for the record.
Good evening, my name is Paul Richard Rich Rodriguez, and I live in Kaiser.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members, and esteemed citizens. I'm here tonight to talk about sustainability, sustainability for the city of Kaiser. Because most of us know, the biggest challenge facing humankind is the global climate change brought from burning fossil fuels. Two weeks ago, I contacted the city and asked for a copy of the city's sustainability plan and learned that there was no such plan. This was just a little unsettling. Consider the following five points. Does the city know or track how much CO2 is produced from its fleet of vehicles every year? What's the city's plan to reduce CO2 from its fleet emissions? How will it be tracked? Does the city know how much natural gas is burned every year within the city? Does the city have a plan to reduce this? How will it be tracked? Does the city have a plan to increase the planting of trees to reduce the urban heating effect? What's the city's plan to reduce urban island heating? Does the city have a plan to know about how much CO2 is emitted from along the traffic on River Road? Does the city have a plan to reduce it? How will it be tracked? And finally, does the city know and track how much energy is used in the heating and cooling of this city hall and all city assets? How will it be tracked? The list of advantages to the city and its citizens for reducing energy use and CO2 is long. This includes reduced transportation operating expenses for the city, reduced city building energy use, improved city policing, and a more livable city, perhaps through an expanded tree canopy. To fully explore how the city can take advantage of these opportunities, I will be recommending the formation of Sustainability Committee. The committee should be tasked with recommending, providing recommendations to capture data on CO2 emissions, energy uses, and how to reduce them. These actions taken together should produce, reduce operating costs for the city while creating a more livable city. Over the coming months, I will be working with each of you, council members, city staff, community, schools, and others, in formulating a draft charter for this vital committee. The charter will then be presented to the council for consideration and adoption. This is some of the most important work we can do as stewards of our community, of our children's future, and improve the desirability and livability of the city. There is now a Facebook page called Kaiser Sustainability. The Facebook page will be a hub for activities leading to the charter presentation to council. I invite each of you in this room and watching on Kaiser TV to join in this initiative as we create a more livable, vibrant, and sustainability, or sustainable, sustainable community together. Pleased to take your questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Rodriguez? So I have a couple. One, are you aware of our tree program?
Pardon?
Are you aware of our tree program?
I am not.
So there is information, I think it's on our website. We also have the program for, for development that requires a two-for-one replacement during development. So we can get to that information from community development about that program we have in place. Do you have the information on the city hall? This is a, this was built as Leeds Silver. So that might be of interest to people in this community. When this building was created back in 2007 and '08, the efforts that were put in for sustainability. So that'd be fun to share with people what we do here, especially in terms of our stormwater. I think it's quite beautiful, as well as very practical. And might I suggest also adding to the Facebook page a connection to our environmental unit within Public Works? No, it's Public Works, a plant that has the environmental. Public Works. So you might want to talk to our environmental coordinator? The street manager? Okay. About the efforts being done in terms of sustainability and the environment. She's been putting out some fabulous stuff, especially for families to engage in some wonderful activities to do some environmental learning. So I would encourage connecting on that. And then if you would like to have some additional conversation, I would welcome a phone call and maybe talk about some of the additional connections that we can make throughout our community. I might suggest also connecting with the Claggett Creek Watershed Council. Who's our representative? Councilor Kohler? Councilor Kohler is our representative to the Claggett Creek Watershed Council, and they're doing some fabulous work. Not so much right now, because of, we're kind of on a pause, trying to do some projects. Our last one was the city hall cleanup, which is an annual event. But they've been doing some great restoration work and other environmental education work along Claggett Creek. So if I might suggest connecting with them. So love to have an ongoing conversation about connecting up some of the things going on.
Look forward to working with each of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the things that happens, so I've been involved with Claggett Creek Watershed Council for about a year now, I guess, a year and a half. And I, I'm impressed with the knowledge and the knowledge base and their ability to figure out what we can and what we can't do in order to help make our waterways cleaner and better, and that, and that work on the Stormwater Advisory Council. I mean, I'm thoroughly impressed with all the things that we're already doing. So if there's some other things that you really feel that you want to do after you take a look at everything that is happening, yeah, let's talk.
Yep. All right. So my card is in the back, and it has my contact information. So please feel free to email, and love to follow up with some conversation.
Look forward to working with each of you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't have anybody else signed up for public testimony. Is there anyone else who would like to take advantage of an open mic? Don't come any at once. All right. With that, then, we will go on to public hearings. Nope, administrative action. Item 8A, which is resolution establishing the amount of the sewer system development charge for wastewater treatment facilities, repealing resolution R 2019-2991. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city attorney.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. Every year, we usually adjust the system development charges, SDCs, as they're known, for the Salem wastewater treatment plant. I always like to point out that there's actually two separate sewer SDC charges. One is a pass-through to Salem for the treatment plant. The other one, which is not on the agenda tonight, is for what we call our acreage fee, or for the lines that the city puts in, the sewer lines. This is the wastewater treatment plant, SDC for Salem, under our agreement with them. That's a pass-through fee. We actually have to impose it, and then it's passed through the Salem. The new fee, and the, the itemization is on the last page of the resolution, is proposed to be 319. The current fee is 308. Because state law requires allowance of comments, I would ask the mayor to see if anyone wants to comment on it, although it's not a public hearing. And the recommendation is unless there's further questions, to pass the attached resolution. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody who would like to speak to this issue around the systems development charges for the wastewater fees? Seeing none. Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R 2020 establishing the amount of the sewer system development charge for wastewater treatment facilities, repealing resolution R 2019-2991.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R 2020 establishing the amount of the sewer system development charge for wastewater treatment facilities, repealing resolution R 2019-2991. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 8B, the approval of charter revisions. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city attorney.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. The last meeting, council approved moving forward, but because the actual draft wasn't including all the changes, I wanted to have you one more chance. There's actually, the ballot title will be the final chance, but this is pretty much your last chance to make any tweaks, and I wanted to put it before you and by minute motion, direct us to move forward with the necessary steps to put it on the November 2020. with the necessary steps to put it on the November 2020 ballot. Just prior to the meeting, Councilor Reed had some very minor issues with some missing commas or extra commas that I have not had an opportunity to look over with your indulgence. So I will add those as makes sense and point those out at the next meeting. Other than that, are there any questions or concerns on the final charter version?
Looking, looking. Thank you, Councilor Reed, for reading that thoroughly. We know that misplaced comma can lend you in court. So just saying, we've seen things like that happen. Seriously. Councilor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had communication with a couple of members of the Charter Review Committee and let them know that it was going to be on our agenda tonight. And they expressed their appreciation for their being able to be on that committee. And I'm going to say thank you very much for being on the committee to make that all work. This is something we just need to get done. Thank you.
I would echo that sentiment as well. Any further comments or questions? Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council place the charter with the corrections of commas in or out from Councilor Reed, the charter revisions of 2020, and place it on the November 2020 ballot.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council directs staff to take the steps to put the charter revisions with the corrections provided and on the, prepare for going on the November 2020 ballot. Any further discussion? Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify, it wasn't just commas, but they were of equal unimportant, well, yeah, of equal, I can't even think of the word right now. So, yes, significance, shall we say? So just as you read the motion, it's not just commas. So it is minor revisions or insignificant or substantial or perhaps substantial, depending on what we decide.
So just for the, for clarification, that it's with the minor revisions as recommended? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I have a question for the city attorney. So with the Charter Review Committee, is their work considered sunsetted? And do we need to take action to thank them for their work in that regard?
You certainly may take action to thank them for the work. It requires no particular action. Their, their committee timed out. So their, their charge is timed out and they, their committee has sunsetted.
All right. So one note that for the record, that the committee did sunset. And for the record, that we as the city council thank them for their great service to the people of our community. That concludes our administrative action consent calendar. Council President Freeman, would you please read the items on tonight's consent calendar?
Sure, we have six items on the consent calendar. Items 9A is a resolution ratifying the city manager's signing of master services agreement with RT, advisors for matters related to information security incident. 9B is a resolution ratifying the city manager's signing of engagement letter with Luis Prispos and Biscard and Smith LLP as special legal counsels for matters related to information security incident. 9C is a resolution authorizing the finance director to enter into an agreement with RT advisors for the Sentinel One End Point Protection Platform subscription. 9D is a resolution authorizing the city manager and chief of police to enter into an E prosecutor usage agreement with Marion County. 9E is a resolution to repeal of resolution R 2020-3088, exemption of professional services agreement for carving of Kaiser Cultural History Pole from competitive bidding and awarding agreements to Oregon 3D Art and Chainsaw Sculptures LLC. 9F is the approval of the July 6, 2020, city council regular session minutes.
Thank you very much. Are there any polls? Councilor Herrera?
You know, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if it's that significant that on F, there's a word that, that on the minutes.
So you want to pull F?
Yeah.
And then we can do that? Okay. So let's go ahead and pull F.
We'll talk.
Okay. We'll pull F. Anything else?
Madam Mayor?
Council Reed?
I'd like to pull C, please.
Pull C? Okay.
C.
And just to make sure that we get some conversation on the record, not that I disagree with it, but I want to pull E, just to make sure that people hear the rest of the story on that. Okay. So that leaves A, B, and D. That's what I got. Council President Freeman?
I move that the Kaiser City Council approve the consent calendars, items 9A, B, and D.
I'll second that.
Consent calendar, items A, B, and D have been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Council Reed, item C.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question was regarding the quote that is on page 35 of the packet. And there was an item on the quote for the ransomware warranty. And I wanted to find out a little bit more information about that. First of all, is that something that is part of this agreement that we would be signing? Second of all, how might that have affected our, our situation that we are currently, currently dealing with? And I guess basically, would this have changed anything had we had it? So I just wanted to find out a little bit more on the ransomware warranty item.
Sure.
That was a hot potato.
Why is everyone looking at me? I guess to answer your question, yes, this would have been a game changer had we had this software in place beforehand. This has the active intelligence that would have noted the specific files that had been uploaded to our systems and would have stopped those files in its tracks. Unfortunately, our existing virus software did not stop this and it got bypassed. So this, this has been a fairly impressive software to observe over the last month. It does kind of give me a cold sweat as I look at it 24/7, thinking, okay, what's this new clip that came up? What do we need to do? Is this something to be worried about? So this, this has a lot more, a lot more meat to it as far as stopping things. Yes, the ransomware is part of this. It does come with that kind of a warranty. They do stand behind their product that much.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wood. It was very thorough. Appreciate that. Any further questions or comments on item C? Council President Freeman?
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt the consent calendar 9C.
I'll second that.
Item 9C has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item E, which is, has to do with the carving. The only reason I want to pull it out because I don't want anybody to get the impression that we're not doing it. That has nothing to do with that. This is just going to make a change in how we're going to get it done. And I'm going to look at the city attorney to maybe give a little bit of the rest of the story. But yes, it's going to happen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I put it on consent calendar because you want to try to explain how artists work. To make a long story short, Oregon 3D Art had verbally agreed to enter into the contract, but had not yet signed the contract. Typically, we don't put things in the packet unless the contract's signed. But the way the timing work, we put it in. After council went through the exemption process and we contacted them, they indicated that the amount of work necessary, their workload had changed since they had agreed to it verbally. And they're just not able to get to the project. And so former Mayor Lori Christopher, who I've been working with on this, said that another artist was recommended. She's working with that artist now. And we actually did discover that there is an exemption, exemption for artists. So we will not have to do the bit exemption. So the matter, we will be informing council if that works, it'll be at the same or maybe slightly lesser cost than what we had arranged with Oregon 3D Art. So that's moving forward.
So I just want to make sure everybody knows, yes, it is going to go forward. Yes, I've seen some pictures of the work of the artists that they're talking with. It's amazing. And so look forward to the second tree looking as beautiful as the first one to tell part of the story of Kaiser, which is this one's agriculture, agricultural, as hopefully you'll remember from your earlier discussions. So, okay, just want to make sure we tell the rest of the story. All right. Any other questions on the chainsaw art for the story poll? Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve the consent calendar 9E.
Second that.
Consent calendar, item 9E has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. F. Councilor Herrera?
Yeah, mine was kind of minor. It's on the, on the written page of the minutes on page 48. The, the sentence reads on, on the paper, "Councilor Herrera expressed the opinion that the city owes the community an apology for having section 44 and charter for so long." And we, the conversation was in regards to the gay community and LGBT or whatever. And that's what I was referring to. And actually said, "The city owes that community." And I didn't think it was a big deal, but the more I think about it, it kind of is significant, like you were saying. So I would say, change the word from "the," "the city owes the community," to "the city owes that community."
Perhaps for clarification, if I might suggest, do you want to put in actually LGBTQ community? Do you want to put that into the minutes to specify? Or just that?
That would be actually better, I would say.
Because that's what you were talking about. I recall that conversation. But I think that would accurately reflect.
That was the conversation, and I said, "That owes that community." That's, that would be fine.
Okay. So you, I would agree that that would reflect the actual conversation which the minutes are trying to capture. Okay. Any questions on the correction to the minutes? Council President Freeman?
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt the minutes from July 6 as amended.
And I'll second that.
Item 7F, as amended, has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Council liaison reports. Who'd I pick on last time? Okay. Councilor Herrera?
Okay. Let's see here. Last week, I had my peer mentor checkup with Capasus on the 13th. What we do is we, we check up, we have a, check up on our folks who are peering, who are mentoring, and we just kind of check and see how they're doing. My, my person had a baby, so I had to kind of wait three months. So I sent her a little gift card and we communicated, "We're going to zoom this week." All we do is just stay in touch with them and ask them if there's anything they need. And someday down the road, I'll bring her here and introduce her to you. And she, she's really bright. You'll be impressed. Anyway, on the 14th, I had Park, Parks Board meeting, I attended. And, you know, a member that came over and, not cameras, named Jeff, right?
Jeff.
Yeah, he did a really good job. But I will say this, I really am impressed with Jane Herb's passion and commitment to the library thing. My question, I had a question in regards to, it was in the master plan and, you know, and that process is regards, in regards to putting in Cut and Rapids. And that's a whole different thing. But I just wanted to compliment her on that passion because I've seen so many projects or dreams, if you will, from this community, from different people. And it's amazing watching the process when it comes to fruition and the hard work. And like I told her, there'll be some stumbling blocks, but you can do this. I know it's going to take a lot of money, a lot of help, and a lot of community support. But I believe that those dreams start as dreams and become reality by communities like Kaiser. So anyway, on the 15th, I had my LAC meeting, the Latino Action Committee. And although we didn't have the great event that we usually do, and I wanted to run, thank you to those of you that attended our drive-through event or whatever. And it was, you know, like I told my wife, it was a little cheesy, but it was still kind of cool, you know? It's just the fact that we, we gave people awards and that was kind of cool. I was reminded because of a picture that somebody sent me and one of the graduates sent me and thanked me for that. In our LAC meeting, Anthony Veliz, who's the chair of the Oregon Board of Education, came and talked to us and gave us some advice on some of the situations we've been discussing as far as our concerns with the school board. And he is amazing. He is so wise. And for a young guy, I was just so impressed. On the 17th, we had, I had my first commission of judicial fitness and disability. And boy, I tell you, zooming with folks from all over the state, judges, and it's pretty impressive and pretty, it's, there's a learning curve. I mean, and that, it's very fascinating, the stuff that they were doing. It's amazing. And it's my first meeting, so I was a rookie. So, and I enjoyed that thoroughly, by the way, and very honored to be part of that. This morning, I had the Kaiser United meeting. Meredith does a wonderful job with all the folks in there. And I'm glad we have good participation. By the way, on that, we had a gentleman from, and I should have wrote my notes on that, but a gentleman from the county, and he stated something to the effect that they will be doing some testing, free testing in, in certain, Marion County is who you'll have to check out. But it went by zip codes in 97, I don't know if you're familiar with that, 97302, 303 on the, I think Thursday at the fairgrounds. More information, call the county. But I thought it was kind of interesting because it's, you know, you don't really have to be a person that needs it. You can just go over. And I think it's part of a research or whatever. And we were picked, those zip codes were picked. So that's kind of good information. And that's on the 23rd at the fairgrounds. More information, call the county. That's kind of where we're at. Also, I was, we, I was reappointed last week to the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Commission and the Juvenile Justice Group also, which is, we kind of have a dual thing there. And I really enjoy that. So it's going to be good. I'm also involved now with the St. Vincent's Catholic Church is kind of rejuvenating. They had had financial troubles. And I don't know if you're aware of that, but it's mostly, they're going to turn it into a dual-language Catholic school, grade school. We've already selected, I'm going to be on the board, and we've already selected a, a principal who was former principal at, at one of the schools in Independence, a middle school there. I think it was Tamech, yeah, Tamech. And who happens to be Mrs. Gloria, who is the daughter of Arturo and Olga Gloria, part of our LAC group, which is going to be kind of exciting. So they're going to start, there's a group of many people putting them, putting together, I think Tarkowski's involved. So they're, they're trying to finance that. And we're going to build a dual-language program for English and Spanish Catholic school. And I'm kind of excited about that. They're going to start from scratch. So that's interesting. Also, last thing, I talked to Eric Jespersen, I don't know if it's the last thing, but McNary High School, it was planning their August 7 graduation. And, and I'm sure Councilor Reed would know more about this. But, you know, because of the situation, of course, they're going to have like seven ceremonies, 45 people, kids per ceremony, because everybody gets their four tickets. That's something we always, I always remember that. And one of the things that he mentioned, that this was a record valedictorian. They had 28 valedictorians, the most ever, which is really, this says a lot for our students and our kids. And I'm proud to say that I know quite a few of them. So in fact, two of them are actually real former mentees. And that's pretty cool. But for all the stuff that's going on with the COVID, I'm so proud of our graduates because of that, that grit and resilience that they have is going to carry them on to whatever endeavor, whether they go to college or trade school, whatever they do. And that's an honor for those kids to do that. Also, by the way, I have to mention this. We recently lost, on a national, John Lewis was kind of one of my heroes. I read his book. And my brother was actually a friend of his and marched with him on that famous bridge at Selma, the Edmond Bridge or whatever, on that second time they did a few years back. And I'm lucky I had a picture of it. But anyway, he was one of those guys that, for, for those of us that follow the civil rights movement and that movement particularly, he was one of our heroes because of the way he was sort of the conscience of the Senate. And he was soft-spoken. And so we lost a giant in the civil rights movement. And that's all I got.
Thank you very much. And Council Reed, if you could also get us more information on the McNary graduation stuff too. Maybe you could, between you and Councilor Herrera, get it on our city website, if we can link. So people can get from our website to the appropriate information of the school district, rather than us trying to reproduce it because we know things change daily.
Oh, yes.
Hourly.
Right. It will change probably, but honestly.
The only thing you really left out was that it will be at the McNary Football Field and not at the fairgrounds.
That's a big part.
Oh, okay.
It will be at McNary Football Field. And it's going to be an all-day thing because, you know what? I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
No.
But I just got on the phone with Jespersen.
It's our thunder.
Okay.
It's our community thunder because our, our kids rock. And that is, that is very exciting about. about the graduation.
Yeah.
Because that was a tough road to hoe.
Yeah.
To make sure everybody got their stuff done and turned in. And how many times did you tell students, get your stuff turned in?
Clearly not enough.
Well, a number of them got it. So they're going to be walking.
Yes.
In a very special, unique ceremony. So, great celebration. Council Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the seventh, I attended a stormwater meeting where we got study materials, you know, DEQ, you know, getting our permit. And we have several steps we have to do. And one of the steps is to get a stormwater management program document. This is our homework, actually, so we all have to go through it and give our comments to Carrie, so she can get this hopefully in final draft pretty soon. And we're actually about a year, I think, ahead of schedule on this thing. So she's doing a wonderful job.
Fab.
And even getting us to understand it. So that's awesome, too. On the next morning, I had a chamber board meeting. And one of the things on discussion was, they're going to have a fundraiser golf tournament at McNary on September twenty-fifth. And because they cannot have the no dinner, which raises money for gift baskets for at the holiday time, this is going to be a fundraiser for that. So put that on your calendars. And then, of course, they're not talking about anything going on other than that. So they just, you know, hopeful, of course, but we know that's probably not going to happen. On Thursday morning, I then went to the Marion County Commissioners Breakfast, where we talked about a few things. And Council President Freeman can kind of sum that up for you. Then we had a work session last Monday, which all things COVID-19, and we know how that's playing out. On last Tuesday, I went to a chamber luncheon, it's the installation of the new board. The new board president is Dave Wallery. And then going forward, I will be gone August third meeting. So just so you know, and then we didn't have a volunteer coordinating committee this month, but we will have one in on August twentieth. If you still need to put an application in, go to the city website. We still do have a few openings on committees. And so we would appreciate all volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tomorrow is the Kaiser Arts Commission meeting. And that, obviously, we're talking about the story poll a little bit, now that we're going to have to find a new artist. So we'd recommend anybody who has any ideas with that, please reach out and let us know. Secondly, I wanted to just mention that this is, you know, it's really, really warm out, and we're starting to get those ninety-degree days. One of the things that we unfortunately in this area run into every year is people drowning when they get in the water. The water's still really, really cold. And I've talked to the Marion County Sheriff that covers Detroit Lake, and he said the number of people that are out on paddle boards without life jackets, things like that, you know, you get hit by one wake in the windy afternoon in Detroit, you're not going to be on a paddleboard much longer. So please, remember to wear your life jackets. Unfortunately, I have heard that due to COVID, a lot of the life jackets that were sitting down by the water are not available at this time, at least the state level. So please make sure you're bringing a life jacket down there, or you're, you know, just don't go in that water. I know we had a call just a couple days ago down by the ferry, that some kids had been swept downstream. So there's just so much floating debris. It's just so dangerous. Please, you know, know what you're doing. You can check boatorgan.com, takes you to the Marine Board, has all the information on there. Just spend a little time there before you venture out into the water, because it's very unforgiving. And then the other thing I was going to say is that about two hours ago, it was announced that it looks like our little burger joint is moving north and going to open in Tooulton at Bridgeport.
Yes.
So we may have a little traffic relief.
Yes.
I was like, I was pretty excited. I was like, oh, my gosh.
I was very excited, too. Yeah, I was like, yes.
They'll still be here. Have you tried to park at Bridgeport?
Oh, my gosh, right. I wish them well.
I do wish them well, yes.
Hopefully, they have some great staff at that city to plan. But you might get some calls for some advice there. So anyways, I just wanted to.
Baseball stadium.
Realistically, yeah, where you're going to line up, I don't know.
He doesn't have a lot of places in Tooulton that's not crowded.
I can't even park there to go shopping. Are you kidding?
I know. I don't shop anymore.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, this is okay. It'll be here Tuesday.
That's all I got.
When you were mentioning about the life jackets, I looked at Mr. Lawyer. We have a life jacket station at Kaiser Rapids Park, don't we?
There is one there, yes.
And are there?
It's all volunteer maintained. The city has no involvement whatsoever. But every time I've been down there, there's been a fair amount of life jackets available every time.
I love that. So to your point.
Watch out for state ones.
Yeah. So come to Kaiser and do recreation, and you can do it safely. So thank you for that word to the wise. It's already been too many tragic losses already. All right, and good luck to Tooulton. Okay, Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I can just say, I walk the park, Kaiser River Rapids Park, a lot. And lately, Bill, you can attest, you live over by me. If you're watching Shamala, it's nonstop, back and forth to the park. And and I'm happy to say that most of the individuals that I see coming up from the river have a life jacket on. So and some have the helmets, depending on what they're doing, too. So they're being very prepared. So that's wonderful.
I love it.
And I would just follow up with water, and it is getting very warm. Don't leave your animals in your car. I'm and.
And your kids.
Or your kids, that's right. I'm just, I was out early yesterday morning, and I was surprised how many animals were in cars, and it doesn't take long to heat up. So, you know, just think about that, please. I just want to thank the people that came to testify tonight. I'm encouraged. I think since we, it appears since we, during COVID, we're on Zoom, we were able to reach more people. And I think since we've been back to the public, I've seen new faces come into City Hall and testify. And so I think that is fabulous. So I would keep encouraging that. And to my friend Carol, who comes on a regular basis, you're always welcome. You know that, right? So with that, the work session, I attended the work session on the twenty-seventh of this month, we have the Personnel Policy Committee. Shane is going to be ready for the Planning Commission on August thirteenth. So everyone on the Planning Commission be ready for that meeting. He gave us the month of July off, or we gave him the month of July off. And so we'll be ready to resume in on August thirteenth. I did attend the Marion County Commissioners Breakfast, and they are doing some testing. Roland, you didn't mention, it's with the docs. With UFO. I thought for sure you'd get that plug in there, but they are. But I'm appreciating you mentioning the dates, because Commissioner Cameron didn't share the dates at breakfast, but he did share that they were partnering with UFO on doing three hundred tests. So that's great. And we talked a lot about, they do not train city managers, nor county commissioners, nor city councilors on pandemics and all the things that are happening, and everything we've learned. And so that was a lot of our conversation. But the other really important piece, and I did share the link with everyone on council, Marion County, I wanted to share the press release. So Marion County has, some of you may have heard, has partnered with a local hotel in Woodburn. And this is funded through the CARES Act, which is the federal funds coming in to cities, counties, and the state. And it is the Motel Eight in Woodburn. And so this was June twenty-third was this press release. So they, it says here, they were finalizing the contract to help Marion County residents with a possible who have been possibly exposed or confirmed case of COVID-19 with mild symptoms to self-isolate when they cannot otherwise do safely. And so there is a code of conduct, basically, that someone has to sign to utilize the services. They will have food delivered. Again, this is to keep you safe. And really, what they said is like, if you are in a home, let's just say a three-bedroom, one-bath home, you can't self-isolate, because you need to have a bathroom that is specifically just for you. So you potentially could go utilize the services at the hotel. And so I just think that's really important to let all of our community know that we are in Marion County, so we could take this and utilize it. And like I said, I did share this press release with the council and staff. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for sharing that. That's very important. Council Herrera?
If I may, if I'm not mistaken, the city of Woodburn is suing them for doing that. And I believe that they didn't go through certain hoops. That's the latest I heard. I don't know if that, Chris, could you know about that?
I can't comment on that. That wasn't discussed at Marion County Breakfast.
There was kind of a mix-up on that, because they didn't go.
Yeah, it wasn't discussed at breakfast, so.
It was in the paper, so.
I don't take the paper, so I can't.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I don't know. So I imagine we will hear more about that.
No, I just, I'm just throwing it out there, because I just read it, and I just went, wow.
Yep.
To be continued, there you go.
For sure. One of the things, though, I really appreciate, thank you for bringing up so many of the efforts that are going in our community, that we've all tried to share, not what's just happening here in Kaiser, but how we are partnering to help families and individuals navigate in a safe way, in a healthy way. So appreciate that. And our businesses as well, that have adapted, have developed new products, have developed new protocols, who have developed new ways of doing business, that if they ever talk about going back, there's no back to go to, they've already evolved. And I think some of the changes that have been made are going to be actually very good ones for us in terms of public health. So. And just for the record, it was never a bad idea to wash your hands. Right, Nurse Dorfler?
Certainly.
All right. Nurse Dorfler said it was always a good idea to wash your hands.
And wear your mask.
So and.
Keep your snot to yourself.
All right. With that, very enlightening segue.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to you, Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I also attended the Stormwater Advisory Committee, and we have some work to do as far as looking over the Stormwater Management Advisory Panel. Anyway, I'm not sure what that P stands for. But yes, it will be some interesting reading, a lot of good, hard work.
Program.
Program, thank you.
Stormwater program document.
Party? Okay. So anyway, I really appreciate being part of that process. And again, very thorough, and really proud to be part of those efforts. The Latino Business Alliance meeting was canceled for this month, which was really disappointing, because I was looking forward to that. I also attended the Unity Rally, and it was really great to see so many members of our community there. A lot of our police were there, a lot of our, some of our city staff were there, Chris is there. And it was just a really good way to come together as a community to discuss issues. And all of the speakers, Carol Dorfler spoke there, Mayor Clark spoke there, and some other people spoke there. And I learned a lot. And that's important to be able to have these discussions, is to learn, and to figure out where we are, to figure out where people are coming from, and to really help support each other. And that was the goal of that whole rally. And a big thank you to Heather and Richard, and I'm going to forget their last name.
Howard.
Howard, thank you, for hosting that event. I attended the Chamber Lunch this week, and congratulations to the new Board of Directors this year, and a big thanks to the outgoing Board of Directors. I was also a guest at the Chamber's Government Affairs Committee meeting through Zoom. And that was, on that meeting, Janet Carlson and Mayor Clark discussed a lot of what was going on in terms of our efforts with the homeless, with the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance. And I'm sure Mayor Clark will have more to say about that. But that is really important information to get out. What are you doing about homelessness? Because it's one of those things that people see and ask that question. And we are doing a lot. And we are being very efficient with our efforts with that. And again, makes me very proud. So thank you for your efforts in that. Been participating with a lot of Superintendent Christie Perry's conference calls. She's had a few of them this summer. And it's very difficult to plan for a school year with so many different possible contingencies. It does look like there will most likely be some kind of a blended learning sort of program, where you have both in-person and online. Definitely not a perfect ideal situation. Nobody's suggesting that it is. But we need to get these kids educated in the best way possible. And so we're trying to plan for that. And there is what is called an EDG program. Don't quite remember what that acronym stands for. But basically, it's an all-online option. And so if you've not heard information about that program, please visit the district website to find out more. You do need to apply or register for that. And so there's a lot more information on that. But for the kids who did really well with the all-distance learning, that is an option for this next year. Also, there is a Q and A, a question and answer, Facebook Live event, Wednesday in English, and then Thursday in Spanish, for parents and students to be able to get some more information. Again, as we get information, it could be a little frustrating, because nothing is set in stony yet, because things are evolving every day. And but at least to kind of know what to expect, and to get your voice heard. And one of the, you know, the concept has been brought up earlier tonight, but it's not enough just to register your complaints on social media, but you have to get those those comments into the right ears. And so this Q and A session is a good way to do that. And there, the school board, the school district needs to get that feedback in order to plan accordingly. So that is available for participation with that. There is a Personnel Policy meeting coming up next Monday, so I will be involved with that. The Kaiser Heritage Foundation, the mayor and I are on this board together. So and she's the official liaison, but I'm just going to chime in and say a little bit about what they're after. The Kaiser Heritage Foundation is the organization that runs the Cultural Center. And that includes the Kaiser Library, the museum, the Kaiser Art Association, and the Kaiser Homegrown Theater. So those four organizations are part of the Kaiser Cultural Center. And all of the organizations are going to be opening in some form or another. The Art Association is doing classes, Homegrown Theater is looking into offering some classes. Some of them are doing some online things. The Art Association's doing a show, Homegrown Theater's trying to put together some online monologues and things. And there are some activities at the library. They're going to be having a book sale. And I don't have the exact date on that. I believe it's the end of August.
Yes, I think it's the last weekend in August. And they've got some really cool options for pickup and drop-off. If you want to order bags of books, like five bucks a bag, and they can do, you know, Librarian's Choice to add a little goodie to your bag, you know, to.
If you like this, then.
Then you might like that as well. So there's all sorts of really cool options, because people were so generous that their storage unit is overflowing.
Yes. And that the in-person book sale will be at the McNary Golf Club.
Yeah, Jeff and Cheryl's.
Jeff and Cheryl's there. So anyway, if you're interested in that, go visit their website, and there's lots of good information there. So it's good to see that culture, culture is still happening despite our different way of living now. So in addition to Councillor Herrera's information on McNary graduation, I would encourage you to visit the website. McNary's website is wonderfully updated and has lots of great information. And to open that to other schools in the community, Salem Kaiser will have some kind of live graduation for all of their schools. And I'm not sure what some of the private schools are doing. But if they haven't already, they probably will have some form of that, whether it's online or in person or whatever. So just keep an eye on those websites. We are very proud of our graduates. And we look forward to seeing what they can contribute to the world. So that's basically all I have for tonight.
All right.
Also, I will not, I will also not be here August third, for August third's meeting. I will be out of town on that as well. So, yes, thank you.
Anybody else at this point, August third? Yeah, Marlene and Cam?
Hell, I'll take it on.
Well, you do, then we don't. Are you also gone the third?
Oh.
You better be here.
I'll be here.
We know where you live.
I've only missed two meetings.
Yeah. This will not be the third one. All right.
Five years.
Okay.
Six, actually.
Okay, I made that note. Speaking of which, Councillor Coler?
I might be here, but.
Huh?
I might be here, but I'm probably going to be gone.
Okay. We'll plan ahead.
Okay. So Tuesday, the seventh, along with Councillors Reed and Parsons, I attended the Stormwater Advisory Committee. One of the things that I really enjoyed in that meeting is when Bill Lawyer reported that the Stormcatch Basin Waste was soon to be going to collection site near the airport in Salem, rather than some gravel pits. rather than some gravel pits around our area. And he mentioned that Carrie Blalock is the one that secured that agreement, so kudos for her. Very good. And of course, the Stormwater Program Document, we get to review all that. Anyways, Wednesday, the day after that, I attended the SEDCOR Zoom meeting and got to learn about several businesses that explained how they're helping make masks and how they're changing what they're really doing to make their business work and to help it here in Oregon. I was not able to attend the LBA meeting, the Latino Business Alliance meeting, because they canceled it. That's something I get to go to a lot, and I appreciate that. Of course, that Thursday night, the 9th, was the Traffic Safety Bike Ped Committee meeting. And there was a lot of things discussed, the light street, the path and the parking zone, what might be a solution, what could be recognized that it's a lot better than it was. And they expressed their displeasure on parking on the path. And some people talked about speed bumps and traffic circles and pedestrian islands. So a lot of time spent talking about the sidewalk connectivity project, and I'm sure that we'll hear something more about that in the future. And Friday, I was with, on the LOC call, government, Governor's talking about shutting the state down again, said she'll be kind enough to give people, the businesses, 24-hour notices before she shuts them down. So she didn't do that yet, so we'll see what happens. And the 13th, attended the work session where we talked about the COVID-19, things that we did and what we could do better. And that was very informative. And the 14th, attended with Councillors Parsons, Reed, and Mayor Clark, the annual Chamber Board Insulation. That was really a fun, fun time. It's, every time I get to spend a bunch of time with the Chamber members, and I'm just impressed them. What all they do for Kaiser is just really amazing. And the 15th, I hope everybody was successful in getting their taxes filed. Sorry. And the 17th, had another LOC call.
No, July 15th, they extended it. I just got my, I even forgot that they had moved it out. Oh, my goodness. Sorry.
July 15th was the extended date, so, anyway. 17th, another LOC call. Governor's very concerned with the number of cases. And sometimes it's really confusing when you try to figure out what's going on and what's happening and what's not happening. And I visited with a lot of constituents that said, you know what? I just don't turn on the news anymore, because I'm just too tired of listening to all this. And I understand that, because it is very confusing, it's very frustrating. Even when I listen to all of it, it's still confusing and very frustrating. And on the 18th, I was able to review Palmer Snap's Eagle Project Workbook in his preparation for his Eagle Board. It was a great project over at the Rickman Garden, excuse me, not the Rickman Garden, it's...
Jerry and Peggy Moore.
Jerry and Peggy Moore Garden, on Rickman. Bents were really good. And then on the 19th, I worked with Isaiah McBride Andrade, who's helping to start his Eagle Project this week at Kaiser Rapids Park. And tomorrow, I'm looking to go to a ribbon cutting for Wicked Sweet with the Chamber. That should be kind of fun. And a special thank you for Tracy registering many of us, I'm sure, to the LOC Conference in October. And I was, I was reading something earlier this week, and I thought, this is kind of interesting. There was a public service announcement that suggested you put something important in your backseat to remind you that your kids are there. Really?
No, it's so sad that we even have to mention that. But every year it happens, doesn't it?
What more can you put in your backseat than your kids to remind you that your kids are there?
Wow, yeah, but it does happen every year.
Wow!
Okay. With that public safety announcement reminder, the weather's hot. Nothing living stays in the car. Take it with you.
I just couldn't believe that.
Yeah, wow. All right. Just a couple of things to add. Glasses. Oh, there it is. Found it. So to Councilor Kohler's point about ongoing meetings, there have been calls every week with the Economic Recovery Team, with Regional Solutions. So I've been able to secure a place on those calls and listen in, talking about the additional guidance for businesses being covered on regulatory issues. So one of the big concerns our businesses have, especially with the recent discussion from the Governor about businesses being affected by people having events at home, and to that point, that did create quite a bit of confusion, and I really haven't gotten a lot of clarity yet. I'm hoping at this Friday's statewide conversation with the folks from the Governor's office, they'll be able to shed some light on that. Questions were asked at the last League of Oregon Cities call, and it was still not terribly clear how that's supposed to work out. All I know is that our businesses are doing an incredible job with providing healthful, safety, safe and productive work environments for their customers as well as their employees, and they are doing everything that they can think of, collaborating with our Chamber. Huge shout out to Danielle, to Jonathan Thompson, staff of the Chamber, the board. They have been tireless in listening, connecting, supporting, being the shoulder to cry on, help sorting things out, and advocating for helping people navigate into a successful future. And a huge shout out for them. So we're gonna continue all these conversations to make sure that we have clarity on what is expected and how we as a community, as Kaiser community, continue to thrive as we innovate into a new future. That said, one of the things that continues to be a problem for a lot of people in our community is the failure to make good on unemployment. I know a lot of work has gone into hiring more people, and there are still problems happening on the website and with getting unemployment insurance. Keep at it, is all I can say. Is I know people that after weeks and literally months have gotten their payments. And I just hope to heavens that people can make it that long without receiving their unemployment. There are resources available, especially for families in our community. I made a conversation this afternoon with Rick Guapo from the Marion County Food Share, Marion Pope Food Share. They continue to increase the amount of food being delivered to Kaiser. They said the amount they're taking to Kaiser Community Food Bank is more than double what they did last year. St. Edwards is now a food hub for distribution. They are doing tremendous work there. They partnered with Kaiser Elementary School, so when people pick up their grab-and-gos for the kids, they also have food there for the families, because the school district provides food for the children. And so rather than have two places where people to go, they're a one-stop shop, where we've got food boxes also for the families. So they've done a tremendous work bringing in more food and getting it out to folks so that, you know, kids and families are going to be able to have the food they need to be able to keep healthy and strong. You know, a person who is not well-fed is going to be more vulnerable to all sorts of diseases, COVID being among them. So this has been a huge, huge effort on Marion Pope Food Share. For all of you who have supported the Food Share, I love you. I absolutely love you. This has, you're saving lives, so...
Fifteen cars in line to the church on my way home.
Fifteen cars? Yep. So people are being, Monday night is when they're distributing at St. Edwards. Thank you to St. Edwards for pivoting. Oh, Faith Lutheran, okay, for that one, because St. Ed's, I think they also had distribution tonight, Sunday afternoon?
Monday afternoon from 3:00 to 5:00.
Okay.
So that happened today.
So that was also in both places. And they're not looking, you know, well, did you get food boxes one place or another? Like, if you're coming for food, you're getting food. Period. Dignity and respect. You need food, you're getting food. We want to make sure that you have what you need. So we're gonna continue to support our food, our food pantries to make sure people have well-fit families. Back to my notes. I talked about SEDCOR. The businesses that were highlighted are local businesses providing, who have pivoted their businesses to make PPE, Personal Protective Equipment, Northwest Alpine, Watershed, St. Corsair, and ADEC. All changed their product lines to produce Personal Protective Equipment. Oh, and by the way, new fabric types, new formulations, because that's what our businesses do. They innovate. Way to go. Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance, yes, Councilor Kohler, you're right. I will talk about that. The last board meeting was focusing on preparing for the Notice of Funding Availability, which is the first round of funds that we, as the new Continuum of Care, will be eligible to apply for from HUD. This is very exciting for us as a newly-formed COC and for our nonprofits that are providing services for people in our community who are homeless. This is gonna be a little bit of a road hoe as we're catching up for where we should be for funding for the nonprofits in our community and our service providers, but because we're collaborating now and not working separately, and we also have very, very good data, we're gonna be able to produce some very high-quality grant applications. And I believe, because I know that our nonprofits and service providers are fabulous, they're gonna be funded. I'm just, of course, there's Salem Kaiser and Marion Pope County, of course they're gonna be funded. The, that was covered, that was covered. There was a webinar that I think Chris Epley and I were both on, Fostering Open Dialogue on Race and Equity. And this was out of my alma mater from graduate school, Kansas State University, the other end of the...
The lesser of the two.
No, yeah, the little apple, as they said, being Manhattan. But it was a fabulous conversation with leadership from Manhattan and from Civics Plus, talking about great examples through Kansas and other cities and jurisdictions where they have been able to take lessons learned and share those in regards to having meaningful conversations. And a big takeaway was, you can have words, what are the actions that go with it? Where are the actions? And really talking about delineating those. And they had wonderful examples right out of Manhattan, which is where I went to graduate school, and some outlines on how that they were able to not only have conversations, but then operationalize them. And that was really key. All of them said in every single one of those situations, it was about the actions, about how you followed up and were able to really meaningfully listen and then advance for everybody in the community. It was wonderful. I really enjoyed that conversation, and go K-State. Let's see. Oh, on Saturday, the On Point Credit Union opened, and they made a presentation to Rhonda Rhodes, who is the principal at CTEC, the Career Tactical Education Center. It was a gift of $2,500 for the programs at CTEC. And I talked with Principal Rhodes a little bit about what their planning is for reopening. And again, they have a somewhat different model, so they already have some things in place for the onsite, hands-on learning that all of their programs have, as well as distance learning segments for the things that don't necessarily have to happen on campus. But true to form, Rhonda and the entire team, they're figuring it out, they're innovating, and they're gonna deliver for our students. Coming up, we have the Economic Recovery Team meeting tomorrow. I've forgotten about the ribbon cutting tomorrow morning, so I'll get that back on my calendar. I talked with Mommy Maddies today about doing coffee with Kathy Saturday. And they have a nice lawn area in the back there, so BYOC, bring your own chair. And we'll get coffee, and we'll sit and visit socially distanced outside. 10 o'clock, 10 to noon. Come on down, share your ideas, and patronize one of our locally-owned and operated businesses. Monday, I will have a meeting for the search team for the Executive Director for the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. That's at noon. And then on Tuesday, we will have SCATS, the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study. We'll be talking about, very likely, we're still working on the agenda, talk about the upcoming statewide transportation improvement plan, the projects, and then the LCDC, the, no, DLCD, Department of Land Conservation Development, and the statewide transportation strategy to reduce greenhouse gas rulemaking. So that's gonna be a long conversation. That's all I got. Any questions of anybody about anything you brought up that you want to make sure you get on your calendar? Councilor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one additional thing that I spent a little bit of time over with Salem Hospital. And in there, some of my volunteer efforts, we were talking about what's going on with COVID and things there. They have now had two of their staff be tested positive for COVID. Now, if you think about that a little bit, how long has this been going on? And how many patients have they treated that they only had two that have been tested positive? And those two are okay. They weren't bad cases, but they did test positive. And I don't know if they tested positive as a result of being in, where they're working in the hospital or somewhere else. But for only two people to be, two staff members to be infected, I think is tremendous. Just very, very tremendous.
Well done to all the staff at Salem Hospital. Well done. That should give a lot of people a lot of confidence in the steps that they're taking to protect the safety of the staff and the patients. Well done. Thank you for sharing that. Appreciate it. So that will take us then to other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy.
I have nothing. Thanks, Chris.
Chief Dean, nothing. Mrs. Chief Lawyer?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor, Councillors. Just a reminder for everybody watching and listening to use water wisely during this hot period. Make sure and water your lawns, not your sidewalks and your driveways. Play in the water with your kids. Just make sure and turn it off when you're done. Speaking of water use, I'm not so sure if we're gonna get to use any water splash fountain this week. We discovered late Friday or late last week, that the, it was late Friday, that the communication device between the system and the touch pole is bad. We had thought it was just the battery. Batteries came in, put the batteries in, didn't fix the problem. So the options are to turn it on, let it run, or wait to open it. So the part's on order. As soon as it gets here, we'll get it installed, get it operating. So I'm disappointed to hear that this morning, but I don't think we want to just turn it on and let it run.
It's a lot of water.
Lot of water, and a lot of evaporation. And so as soon as we get the part, we'll get it installed, get it running. Wallace House, we will be doing some more work down there, having a contractor do some more work down there. I just want to make everybody aware that there are limitations, because there's a log jam down there. That's where the fire was last year. Not much we can do with that area with the log jam. We could spend a pretty large amount of resources, people-wise, to cut the logs up and make a path only for the river to come up, maybe this winter, and bring logs right back in. So we're gonna focus on everything we can do except the log jam area and finish up that work as soon as the contractor's available. River Road paving, tonight. That's the final lift. Contractor thinks they can do it in two nights, maybe one. I question one night. But at any rate, they should be done with all the paving this week. They've moved very fast on that project, considering we're taking out as much as five inches of asphalt and putting it back. They've really moved along well. Temporal striping, we put down on the final lift of pavement, followed by permanent striping. Talked to the county about making sure the paint's very thick and heavy and with lots of reflectivity. And I've also asked them to make sure and stripe the whole city twice this year. Soon, they're holding off on any striping until they can do River Road. They'll come in and do the whole city, and then another time, probably September-ish, maybe as late as October, to carry through the winter. So that should happen. Also, speaking of paving, Shoreline Drive should be paved Wednesday. That's the storm drain job. The road kind of fell apart more than we had hoped, and so we did some more significant rebuilding of that street. And that's why it's not paved yet. They're supposed to pave Wednesday, and then we should be able to open it for traffic shortly after that. That's all I got.
All right. I know Carol's been watching that project with great interest as an outsider, front door.
Watching, listening, feeling, all of you, but...
Yes, thank you. So just a couple of things. As Councilor Freeman alluded to, we will have Planning Commission next month. And we'll be talking about floodplain ordinance, which is being driven by our community assistance visit from FEMA, identified some, we'll say deficiencies, so that'll be the nice way to put it. But it'll be a pretty heavy lift for our... so that'll be the nice way to put it, but it'll be a pretty heavy lift for our Planning Commission to get through all of the new language that we're bringing. And then the other thing is, next council meeting, we will be having the public hearing for the Area Demaster Plan Amendment. And other than that, we're staying busy and trying to stay cool.
Mr. Wood?
I already talked quite a bit about our cybersecurity incident. I guess I just wanna say at this point, we are, have the majority of our services restored, we're moving into the cleanup phase and stability phase. There is a lot of things with our servers that we're gonna have to be taking a second look at and probably repairing, rebuilding, that kind of a thing. As I indicated before, we are implementing some new things. We are changing with tonight's meeting, our virus protection, and that's gonna be a major step for us. And it was quite interesting watching our old virus protection software and the new one run at the same time and see what picked up which, and the one we're moving to is significantly better, for sure. In addition, we're also rolling out the two-factor authentication, so that means you'll have your password and some code that you'll have to type in that will be unique each time you try to log in. So that will go quite a ways in addressing some of the issues that we've had. I can't really go into a whole lot of the technical details of what happened yet, we are still waiting for a forensic report, so we'll probably be talking about that at a later date.
Shannon?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
And the only thing I would bring up is the City of Kaiser, like all cities in the state, are gonna receive an allocation of CARES funding through the state based on population. And we're still investigating exactly how much we're gonna receive and what the strings are gonna be in relation to that funding, but it's looking like it could be a fairly significant allocation, and so we'll be rolling out some grant programs, get some of that money flowing out with the community. We're also looking at making some of the improvements we made along the front counter for our utility billing folks and Public Works folks, permanent with a, a more permanent sort of glass-like structure, so that we can provide not only virus protection, but also physical protection for our staff on that side of the building, so. And we believe that that funding can be used for that purpose, but we're investigating to make sure, so. Any questions for any of the department heads that you didn't get to ask? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, I had a question for Mr. Lawyer. I had somebody tell me that the brand-new restroom at Kaiser Rapids, at the Big Toy, was closed down this week for repairs to the water main, and that there was no contingency potties. Can you speak to that a little bit, as far as, I'm hoping it was just a day-long project and it was done, but I'd like to find out a little more information on that.
Yeah, we had a water line break down there at Kaiser Rapids, it did affect the water to the bathrooms. It was, I think it was shut down twice, once in the initial break, we did a temporary repair to get it back on, and then went back and did a permanent repair, so it was shut off the second time for a shorter time frame. Should be back on and functional, and hopefully doesn't come apart again.
Okay, so that, that is all open and functional?
Yes, open and functional, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Written Communications, just a couple of things following up. I did receive two emails regarding the fireworks issue, and they pretty much reiterate what has been discussed earlier, so what I will do is I will give them to Tracy for the record, unless somebody would like me to read them in verbatim at this point. So, okay, I will put those in there, and I want the folks who did write me to know that we did deal with a lot of the issues that they brought up, and we'll add them to the record on that one. I received an email from a city employee. "My name is Debbie Wallace, and I work in utility billing at City Hall. I have a serious medical issue involving my lungs that caused me to be off for extended periods of time. During this time, my supervisor, Tim Wood, has been so accommodating and supportive. Recently, I had a relapse and discovered the aerosol used at work was triggering my episodes. I reached out to Kristen and Michelle in Human Resources, who quickly removed all aerosol in the building and replaced them with non-aerosol containers. I cannot believe the quick response and concern for my well-being. They continue to check to make sure everything is okay, my breathing is doing better. They've also asked me to let them know if there's anything new triggering any episodes so they can get right on eliminating them from my environment. I want you to know that Tim Wood, Kristen Myers, Michelle DePina, and Chris Epley are all amazing," and that was in caps, by the way. "They're very supportive, caring, professional, and all-around incredible people. Your management staff are the best I have ever worked for and feel extremely blessed to be going through my medical crisis with them. They continue to make me feel like I am important and cared for. The safeguards they have implemented for me to come to work and do my job is so appreciated. I hope you can let them know their kindness and support has not gone unnoticed, and that they have made me feel safe at work. Kaiser is truly lucky to have them. I appreciate your time." I appreciate her taking the time to let me know, and as a person who suffers from the same issues that she does at work, I would like to work at a place that took that same kind of caution and, and care as she has experienced here. Thank you. This is just one of many ways that we have heard about. We talked last week about the outreach that you all have done to all of the employees during COVID, making sure people were not only just physically okay, but emotionally and mentally okay. This has been a tough road to hoe, and people have been up and down. I've been up and down. And for someone to take the time and say thank you, I wanted to make sure that you all heard it, because it talks, it talks to who you are as people, but that we're all really in this together. So thank you. Thank you for taking care of each other. So that takes us to Agenda Input. August 3rd, 7 o'clock, we have potentially three absent. If any of the four of us left are not gonna be here, we will not have quorum, so if anything comes up. What's that?
Let the rest of us know in advance.
Right. If anything comes up, we will need to know immediately, because we will have to cancel, which we've come close before, but haven't had to do that, and let's not make this the first. Mr. Johnson?
I will point out, as Mr. Witham mentioned, that we have a hearing on that date. And that would be extremely difficult, it's a quasi-judicial hearing, notice, et cetera, so would really appreciate it if ever, all the four of you can make it.
Okay, so would there, would there be some prudence in putting this off, that quasi-judicial hearing to?
We, we are, it's too late, I already noticed, so.
All right. Everybody stay healthy.
I will take the opportunity, if I may, Madam Mayor, to remind folks, it's a quasi-judicial hearing, that you shouldn't make any comments or talk to folks about that, those would be ex-party contacts.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good to know. August 10th, for a council work session. We don't have a topic, correct? I will be absent. Councilor Parsons, you're gonna be absent? No, you'll be back.
I'll be absent.
Councilor Reed will be absent. Are there any objections to canceling the work session for August 10th?
None heard.
Okay. No objections, okay, we get a day off. And then on August 17th, at 7:00 PM, we will meet in regular session. Is there anybody who will be absent on the 17th that they know of at this time? We'll have all seven here, okay, good to know. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Saying none, it is 8:59, we are adjourned.